All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry that you guys get my back. People say that it is my better side, so. All right, so it's my honor and privilege to start our regular Board of Ed meeting. Today is March 27th, 2023, and we have the honor of being at the Pitch High School Library, but now we call it the Dr. Mitchell Media Center. And if you hear background music or sounds, you're on Zoom, is because we've just finished our celebration of Dr. Mitchell. At this point, I would like to call for the Pledge of Legions. Our flag is... Over there. Lori, would you be willing just to start us? Thank you. Our next part is recognition and participation of visitors and delegations. I guess it's Board Member Appreciation Month? That is true. Do you have anything to say then? Yes, we're recognizing our Board of Ed in multiple ways through the month, and we started with some board notes this past week. So we look forward to sharing some neat things for you. Thank you.
Just cash.
100% based in your salary. All right. The next portion of our meeting is called the Comments from Citizens and Agenda Items and Other Subjects of Concern that Lie Within the Jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is a portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments of citizens' portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the... Well, this is now the podium. And state their names and address for the record. Ms. Joan, I'm wondering if you could help me? If you could, if there's anyone who's online that wishes to speak, if you could just put it in the chat so that Ms. Joan can get it and then she can relay that information to me. I'm actually wondering if Jay or Dean, if you could just be the timer and so that when we get to the one-minute mark, you could just flag a hand for me. Thank you very much. So, who would like to come and sit at the podium? There is no order. We should, once again, it's...
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I'll be first. To your lovely chair.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board of Ed members, Superintendent Austin, Assistant Superintendent Piazza, and other members of Central Office. My name is Jennifer Corbial, and I live at 46 Ivy Fort in Bryan. I'm a parent of a student in the district, and I also work as a paraeducator at Groton Middle School. Tonight, I am here representing myself along with my coworkers as the president of the Groton Para-Union. I am here tonight to tell you the very real struggle that I am facing every day to the lack of pay that I am receiving in this position. I gross 18,668 a year as a paraeducator. If I were to take the insurance that is offered to me, I would then have to pay $7,610 a year, not counting our $5,000 deductible, which brings my gross down now to 11,258. At this point in time, I'm not able to afford to pay my rent, which comes to 15,600 for the year. But for all my other expenses, I am now negative $4,342. Therefore, I cannot afford to take the insurance offered. I have to work two part-time jobs to make up the difference in order to pay for just my necessities, such as groceries, utilities, a car payment, and insurance, and a phone. While I am working the two jobs, I am unable to be home to cook dinner and spend any time with my children, and I am often eating dinner at 10 o'clock at night. I was attending college classes, and I had to withdraw because of the need for a roof over my head outweighed the need to further my education. For this reason, I am finding it harder and harder to remain a paraeducator in the town of Groton. I am aware that all of our surrounding towns are paying their paraeducators a significantly higher rate. Myself and my coworkers deserve to be paid a livable wage for the valuable role we play in the educational system. As a paraeducator, we play a critical role in the success of a child able to make in their education. We take on many roles to ensure that our students have the tools necessary to learn and thrive in their growth. We are seeking equity in relation to these roles so that we may continue to do the job we have chosen and love to do. The other struggle that I am having is the loss of several paraeducators each year, often during the school year, to higher-wage jobs, either to other districts or to jobs outside the school system. This hurts both the students involved due to the disruption in services provided, as well as the staff, both certified and hourly, who now have to expand their workload to cover the responsibilities of the departed staff. One example is in our academy at GMS, which has lost two pairs in February alone. That has left a hole that have current staff juggling, rearranging their schedules so that students are properly attended to. Having a livable wage could persuade some of these excellent staff members to remain on the team, giving stability to students involved, who often yearn for a stable situation, and to the other staff members who rely on paraeducators for their skills. Our current wage scale does not provide for new hires, let alone veteran paraeducators, to have a quality of life. We need to be competitive with nearby districts in our wages to ensure that our staff stays within the Groton School System and not seek out a higher rate of pay elsewhere. Thank you, Jennifer Corbial.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Madeline Perry. I have worked for the Groton Public Schools for 27 years. My wage, when I first started, was $6.35 an hour. It has taken 27 years for my current wage, which is now $20.24 an hour. So in 27 years, I have had $13.85 raises in the public schools. I have worked for the school system, I'm sorry, since I worked for the school system. I'm nervous. I'm so sorry.
It's okay. You're doing good.
I have worked for the school system, which is so shockingly, since I have worked for the school system, which is shockingly deplorable. As a paraeducator, we work with students who have many difficult and different issues. When our students are having a bad day, we have to find other places to work with them so that the other students can have less distraction. We are one. We are the ones who deal with their bad days. For this reason, I believe that we should get paid a livable wage. With the wage that I get now, I am not able to live alone because my wage doesn't allow me to do so. If something were to happen to my roommate, I would be in extreme financial troubles. I need to be able to afford a place to live. I should not have to choose whether I pay for my medications or my bills. They are both a necessity in order for me to live. It is also getting harder for me to continue with this job due to the fact that the cost of living is increasingly becoming more challenging to live on this wage. As much as I love my job, as much as we all love our jobs, and do not want to leave for a more suitable lifestyle, all I'm asking for is for a more suitable lifestyle. Security equals happiness and safety. You can provide that to me. Please take my testimony into consideration while you make your decision to let us have a better wage. Thank you, Madeline Perry.
Hi, my name is Kristin Fornier, and I live at 15 Crown Knoll Fort.
Before you start, as you put on your glasses, for those who have written things, if you could just leave them here so that they can go into the permanent record, that would be great. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Kristin Fornier, and this letter is being written on behalf of the Groton School Paraeducators. As a collective, we work alongside certified staff. Paraeducators fill the voids in the educational plans of the students, both special ed and non-special ed individuals. We all cherish our positions within the system, however, as paraeducators, we are not adequately compensated for the work we do. The Board of Education has heard from individual paraeducators about their plights. For example, most of us have to work extra jobs in order to make ends meet, working over 12 hours a day, five days a week, so that we could provide for our families. As a result of having to work multiple jobs, paraeducators often find themselves having to always care for others and don't have time to care for themselves. The outcomes of this are felt when a coworker falls ill and has to stay out of work, creating a domino effect of sorts, as now we have to cover for that coworker's absence, taking on additional work to make sure that their students receive the support they need. A more competitive pay rate would alleviate the need to stretch ourselves beyond our limits. The lack of proper pay for our paraeducators creates other issues as well. We are consistently losing staff to the other districts with higher wages. New London, our neighbors, pay their paraeducators 17.28 an hour to start, while Groton's starting salary is $15 an hour. The disparity in pay has made it difficult to attract and retain paraeducators. Short staffing and high turnover affects all of us. We need to pay our paraeducators a livable wage. Paraeducators build relationships with students that are meaningful. Students rely on their staff for guidance, academic help, and emotional support. Paraeducators provide their students with the support they need so they may succeed in all areas of their lives. Paraeducators are in every classroom, core classes, STEM classes, arts, and physical education classes. They have to be able to assist certified staff in every subject available to students. The paraeducator has to be proficient in these subjects and meet students where they're at and guide them towards meeting their educational requirements. Paraeducators wear many hats and have to be ready for all kinds of issues that may arise at any point of the day, while having vast amounts of patience. Our role can change many times throughout the course of a day. Our students bring their whole self to school every day, meaning a student can be emotionally in crisis, and we have to work with them and address their needs so that they are able to participate in the tasks at hand. The paraeducator is often the first person to recognize when a student is struggling and offer support. Occasionally, this can become physical, and if staff aren't properly trained, serious problems can arise. We have had to act as security guards when one isn't available. We record data on our students daily so that the certified staff can use that data to modify or add interventions to better support the student. Our rate of pay is not commensurate with these duties. Groton has a talented and dedicated pool of paraeducators. We are strongly committed to the work that we do. The amount of tasks that paraeducators perform isn't at the rate of pay they deserve. Paraeducators need to be paid a livable wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. I believe that there is a woman that is on Zoom that is also... Oh, and there's one here. I will get you afterwards, if that's okay. Is it Vivian?
Yes, it's me. Thank you. Yes, I'll wait. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Plan. I'm a resident of Groton, and I'm a parent of two children receiving special education services in the Groton Public School District. I am also a paraeducator. My daughter is in elementary school, and my son is in the middle school. I know that the role of the paraeducator is essential to my children's success academically. The para-professional is crucial in providing both educational and emotional support to academically challenged students. The paraeducator also helps to build and encourage the student's self-esteem. This is so important for each of these challenged students. As a parent, I have recognized that a paraeducator positively impacts the educational success and growth of my children. Because of this, I continue to advocate for a paraeducator to work with my children. I believe there is an overwhelming need for more paraeducator positions in our schools. More students in the Groton Public Schools continue to need the extra support. There is only one main classroom teacher, and he or she can only do so much. It is impossible for one teacher to address the needs of a diverse student population with such varied learning disabilities and abilities. Paraeducators are an important asset for the teacher in helping and supporting students' learning. The parent educators in our school district deserve better recognition and increased wages. They work side by side with classroom teachers, special ed teachers, and other professionals in our schools. The student and paraeducator form a strong relationship. Paraeducators should be included in IP meetings and parent-teacher conferences. They are the important link to child educational success. Unfortunately, our paraeducators do not get the general recognition and acknowledgement for their devoted service to our students. I know that there is a significant number of paraeducators who have left the Groton School District because they earn higher wages in other nearby school districts. The shortage of paraeducators in the school district make it a burden on those pairs that have continued their employment here. It is unacceptable that students requiring one-to-one support are not receiving it. Our children are the ones who are losing out and suffering because of our shortage of paraeducators in this district. Thank you for your attention and consideration in supporting our paraeducators who work day in and day out with our students. Lisa Plan.
Vivian, I'm going to recognize you.
I'm Vivian McKellup. I work as a para-professional in Groton Middle School with the sixth-grade students. Imagine working in a job where no matter how well you perform, you are treated the same as everyone who is new to the role, an employee who has no experience working in a classroom or with special-needs children. Imagine a job where there are no promotional prospects, little training, and no guarantee of an increase in pay each year. It does not matter if you are the best or worst employee. There are simply no prospects or recognition. Today, I'm here to share with you the conditions I currently work under as a para-professional. My role as a para-professional, I earn $15.78 an hour. A new para-professional in my district earns $15 an hour. I have been in the job for five years, and when I took this job, I already had previous classroom and teaching experience. This is what my district chooses to pay an experienced and loyal teacher. I have shown Groton my loyalty. I am reliable and experienced, yet the district does not share the same loyalty back. I have no idea if I will get a pay increase this year or even keep my job this year. How can this salary and conditions be justified? And how can you hope to recruit loyal and motivated people? Isn't that what the children of Groton deserve? My name is Vivian McKellup, and I have worked as a Groton School District as a special education para-professional for five years. I absolutely love my job and the children that I work with. There is nowhere else I would like to work. However, the role of para-professionals has become less valued by the administration, in my opinion. And with the increased cost of living, I may be forced to look for other options. Let me share some background with you about myself. Prior to this position, I worked as a lecturer in business and tourism in the UK. On arrival in the US, I returned to college to add to my existing teaching certificate. In April, I graduate, opening many new opportunities, and I am lucky. I will have more options for the future. Many of my colleagues don't. There is no job progression for para-professionals. The options available are to leave or take a second or third job. Within my district, I currently am employed as an enhanced para. No, this does not mean I get paid more. This means that I currently work full-time with three students. I spend my days with these three kids, going to every class, and they are totally dependent on me throughout their day. I provide reading support and check their work. The only break I get is 30 minutes for lunch. In math class, I work on a completely different curriculum with them, which is provided by my special ed teacher. My job is no different from the tutors in the district, except tutors get paid double what I earn. The Groton School District is certainly getting their money's worth out of me. Even though I spend every day with my students, when it comes to PPTs, I am not invited along or rarely consulted. The person who understands the child's learning needs the most and spends their day with them is not required or rarely consulted. This makes me feel disrespected and not valued in my role. The role of a para-professional is essential to the support and development of a child. The support is written into the students' IEPs, and parents believe that their child is getting the full support, which is legally agreed to when they attend a PPT. Yet currently, on my team, there is only one para, which is me, and at least four kids that need a para. I work with three of them, and the others are supported by my special education teacher. The other is supported by my special education teacher. Recruitment seems to be a huge problem within the district. During the year, they have tried to attract many people to the position. One para lasted a day.
I just wanted to let you know you have one minute left.
Okay, okay. I believe that this is because of a low wage of $15 an hour. Yes, custodians, security guards, and tutors are all paid more than a para-professional. I believe that Groton School District should review the job of a para-professional, should review the job position of a para-professional so it will provide an opportunity for job progression and benefits and a livable wage. This would mean that schools would be able to hire and retain quality-trained staff. Para-professionals are crucial to support special-needs children within the district. The children of Groton deserve the best chance to succeed and obtain a quality education. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Vivian. Sorry, sir. I'll get you next. Thank you. Just real quick.
So you guys have heard from para-professionals.
Could you please state your name?
I'm Elizabeth A. Williams. I live at 221 Pequot Avenue, Mystic. I'm a special ed tutor here in Groton Public Schools. So I know you guys have heard from the pairs. I just wondered if you'd wanted to hear from a special ed tutor, because I realized these jobs are going to be going away soon. And I realized that when I took the job, that it was probably temporary because it was $29 an hour. And previously, I worked for Groton Public Schools like 15 years, over 15 years as a substitute teacher for many years. And then as a ISS coordinator, whatever you want to call them, I did that for like 10 years at the middle school level. And I did that job for about $95, $100 a day. So that was about $15 an hour. And I have a college degree. And I was subbing all different subjects, all different expertise. I had to work in special ed. I had to work in social studies. I had to do science. Had to be able to do a lesson sixth, seventh, eighth grade as a sub. And then I also had to manage the ISS firm at the same time. And I did all that for about $15 an hour for over 10 years. And then they came up with the special ed tutor jobs. So I took one, and I did behavioral tutoring last year at the Mystic River Elementary School. And now I'm at the high school, and I love what I do and what these other people here do, the men and women who do para-professional jobs. You know, you're in the trenches. You're in the dirt. You're in the mud. You're slugging away with the kids, sometimes literally. But it's really tough work, but it's very, very rewarding, which is why I love doing it. And I would really like to see, as a taxpayer in the town of Groton, I would like to see people who work for the town of Groton in the educational field to get respected and to get a living wage. You need to raise the salary up because the fact that I worked for like 10 years, making $15 an hour with a college degree, and the security guard was making $22.50, and the custodian was making god knows how much. And all they were required to do was clean the place, and the security guard, they go in the bathroom once in a while, and I did that as an ISS person. That was part of my duty in ISS. So we have teachers. They should be getting paid more. And then the people who are doing in the trenches, they should be getting paid more. This town has a lot of money. We have plenty of money to go around. We could use it accordingly and pay the people at the bottom who are doing the work. Okay? Thank you.
Sorry that you kept on getting my back. But come join the podium.
Hi, my name is Adrian Johnson. I live at 4 Haley Farm Lane in Groton. After failures in improving reading proficiency in our schools over the past decades and a more recent understanding of the human brain and how reading is processed, Connecticut implemented a direction to our school districts requiring that systems use literacy programs based in the science of reading, approving only the programs that are independently reviewed and shown to be effective. Connecticut's reading scores are abysmal, with only 54% of third graders reading at or above third-grade level. Groton is slightly better than the average, with 58% of our third graders reading at grade level. To be clear, the State Department of Education had to act because the majority of our schools were not properly teaching our kids to read using methods based on scientific knowledge and data. There's been abundant research demonstrating that a majority of children require a structured literacy approach to teaching reading skills, and nearly all will improve their reading with this instruction. Some children will just pick up reading with different methods, but developing human brains did not evolve with the inherent process of written language. People invented it, and our brains have to learn how to process it. We have also known for some time that around one in five children are dyslexic. The dyslexia side of things is a bit more complicated, but because it's so prevalent in learning to read, we now know that it really needs to be included in general education in the early years of learning to read. Groton has been using packaged reading programs by Teachers College and Fountas and Pennell. These programs taught children to read without explicit phonics instruction required. The method was based on the idea that learning to read was as natural as learning to speak. When we got books home, we were told to read them to our children and have them look at the picture, look at the first letter, and guess the word based on the contents of this sentence, known as the three-cuing system. Now, as many of you know, this method does not work. It's not reading. It's word guessing. And teaching this to the majority of readers that need phonics-based instruction is counterproductive and a waste of time. Worse than that, instruction using a cueing system to dyslexic readers is fundamentally damaging to their reading progression and education as a whole. This is not a small subset of our readers. It's one in five of them. Parents should do and expect that our schools will do the right thing and teach our kids to read before anything else. Our reading programs should be exclusively based on the science of reading and the programs evaluated by ed reports or other well-represented literacy assessment organizations. Teachers College and F&amp;P do not meet those standards. The Connecticut Department of Education knows this and put forth a law requiring approved programs. About three years ago, Lucy Cawkins, the owner of Teachers College, published a letter that was titled "No One Gets to Own the Science of That Reading." "No One Gets to Own the Science of Reading." In that letter, she stated, "My hypothesis is, at least for now, that it's unrealistic to think that most general ed classroom teachers will be able to provide what 27 typically developing readers and writers need, while also fully meeting the needs of children with dyslexia." Because those childrens do have varying intensive and specialized needs. That is probably an accurate statement when the classroom's being taught using a Teachers College program. It's not fully based in the science of reading, and we know many dyslexic teachers can be taught in the classroom when the science of reading is used. It's not fully based in the science of reading and we know many dyslexic teachers can be taught in the classroom when the science of reading is used. Some readers will need additional support, but mildly dyslexic readers can be taught to decode without, when taught properly from pre-K and onward. Based on the basis for Groton's program is that we'll be intertwining a few programs using Cawkins Teachers College program, Fountas and Pennell's book program, along with picture books and a few other additional phonics-based programs. All right. Why should our children be used as test subjects? When we have the programs that are rated by ed reports, approved by the state, and proven to succeed using science-based research. And the study on Teachers College that was referred to so many times in the waiver application compares Teachers College versus not using it, not against schools using the curriculums based in the science of reading. Groton has been failing to teach our kids to read with only fifty-eight percent at grade level in third grade and fifty-six percent at grade level in eighth grade. Our neighbors Stonington have been using one of the programs approved by the state for over ten years and they have reading levels of seventy-three percent in both third and eighth grade. We have asked them, has anyone asked them if they're happy with their results and instruction using the science of reading? Let's move on with programs for our children and finally teach all of our kids to read.
My name is Christine Johnson. I live at 4 Haley Farm Lane. Today I want to address the Board of Ed from a teacher's perspective in regards to the reading programs that are proposed in the Groton Public Schools waiver. I've been teaching in another district for twenty-one years, primarily in kindergarten and first grade. The last six years, our district adopted the workshop model for reading and writing. We developed our units of studies and used parts of Teachers College curriculum. For those who may not be familiar with workshop model, it looks like this. You teach them a lesson and then you have the students try it, what you just taught, and then you come back to do a share. For example, if the lesson was on character traits, the kids are to go off and read on their own or in partners and find the character traits in their books. Well, imagine twenty first graders going off to read for twenty minutes. You may ask yourself, what happens to those students who can't read? My colleagues and I noticed this and refer to this as fake reading. Thus, bad reading habits reform. Students who are struggling readers make up their words as their reading strategies. In the last three years in our district, we adopted more direct and explicit methods such as Hegarty, Mezber, and recently some of our staff members are implementing University of Florida, also known as Ufly. I am pleased to read that some of these curriculums are proposed in the reading waiver for Groton Public Schools. However, having taught these curriculums, these are phonics programs, which is the only one part of the reading rope, which takes about thirty minutes of your day. Once these explicit research-based phonics programs are in place, then how are students are going to apply these reading strategies? Are young readers in Groton going to go off and read on their own, just like I described in the workshop model? As an educator, it's disappointing to hear that Groton is going to continue with Teachers College. This program was not improved by ed reports. Why should we trust something that doesn't work on our students in Groton? Going forward, let's be proactive and choose a reading program that will generate readers in our schools. Teachers want to be successful and we need to support them with programs and tools that are proven to work. I do hope Groton teachers have the opportunity to explore and pilot their reading programs, other reading programs.
I'm going to email. Yes, thank you. Joan, the last two people stated that they were going to email. I'm sorry. Please come, Joan. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Meg Spillan-Hauer. I live at 135 Prospect Hill Road in Noahake. I have three kids that have gone through the public school system in Groton. All three of my children attended SB Butler. And now my oldest son is eighteen, freshman at the University of Miami. My daughter is seventeen, a junior at the Marine Science Magnet High School, and my youngest son is thirteen years old and a seventh grader at the Groton Middle School. I'm here tonight to discuss Groton's reading curriculum. Groton currently uses Lucy Cawkins' units of study to teach the students how to read. And by eighth grade, roughly half of the children are reading at grade level. I think we can all agree failing half of our children is not acceptable and we need to do better. Due to statistics like this, in two thousand twenty-one, the state passed the Right to Read legislation, which is trying to address how the districts teach children to read. When my youngest son Spencer was learning to read, he was taught with Lucy Cawkins' units of study. When he was in kindergarten, he started receiving SRBI, which is extra support in reading, and he continued to receive the services through second grade. In the spring of second grade, we had a meeting and they told me he was reading just below grade level and that they were going to be dismissing him because he was right on track. The current reading curriculum, Lucy Cawkins' units of study, uses a three cueing method to teach children to read. The children are given small books with pictures and very simple sentences underneath them. The students are taught to use the three cueing methods because they don't have the phonics knowledge to sound it out. The three methods are meaning, drawn from the context or pictures, visual, does it look right, and structure, does it sound right by looking at the first letter? Based on how my child was taught to read, he was good enough at guessing what the word should be to be considered reading just below grade level. From kindergarten through second grade, students are learning to read, but in the third grade, they are learning, they are reading to learn. If the students don't have a good phonics-based foundation by third grade, everything becomes very hard because it involves reading. The summer before second grade, Spencer's second grade, I had a neuropsych evaluation done and shared it with the school. You see, as they were telling me he was reading just below grade level, I had a document that said he was dyslexic. Even though I knew something was very wrong and they knew as well, how could I argue with them? I didn't have all the facts. That summer, I hired an advocate, someone who could guide me and help make sense of all of this. Spencer was now starting third grade and he was going to be reading to learn. The first week of school, I called the principal at SB Butler to let him know that I'd hired an advocate and that I didn't think Spencer was reading just below grade level. A few weeks later, he called me to discuss a math assessment that Spencer had taken. He got a fifty when he took the assessment by himself. Then he had a teacher just read him the assessment and he scored a ninety. Only then did he call to tell me that I might be on to something. There were no pictures on the math test, so Spencer's ability to guess was gone. I finally had their attention and with the help of my advocate, I could get my son what he needed to be and feel successful. He's now in the seventh grade and reading above grade level and on the final step of the Wilson program. Dyslexic students are taught how to read using a systematic phonics-based instruction. And if you can teach a dyslexic student with this method, you can teach other students the same way. That is what the Right to Read legislation is fighting for. The Groton Reading Waivers is a forty-five-page document asking the State Department of Education if we can still use the same reading curriculum that we have been using. In order to understand it, I wanted to share a couple of definitions with you. Balanced literacy is a whole word language and a little phonics. This includes the three cueing method and is what Groton has been using. The other term is structured literacy and at times referred to as the science of reading. Structured literacy is explicit systemic systematic teaching that focuses on phonological awareness, phonics, decoding, spelling, and word recognition. The Right to Read Legislature is requiring all districts to choose a reading curriculum that is based on structured literacy. According to the reading waiver that Groton filed, and I quote, "Groton's ELA curriculum is shifting the balance with a focus on science of reading while it includes both literacy, balanced literacy, and structured literacy approaches." That's from the bottom of page seven of the reading waiver. If we continue to use a balanced literacy curriculum in any way, we are continuing down the same path. The Right to Read Legislature is requiring schools to teach reading with a structured literacy program, not a balanced literacy or any version of it. I'm not sure who helped Superintendent Austin with the reading waiver and reading curriculum, but my advice is to utilize the certified dyslexic practitioners that you have in the district. They have the training and the experience needed to help guide the district in choosing the best structured literacy program. I've done a lot of research, spoken to multiple advocates, education lawyers, and other parents. The numbers do not lie. We are ranked in the lowest thirty-three districts in the state of Connecticut. I've provided the smarter, balanced assessments for ELA in the state of Connecticut, town of Groton as a whole, and then each individual school in the district, and the numbers are disturbing. Approximately half of all Groton students cannot read at grade level. Let me repeat that. Fifty percent of all students cannot read at grade level. That's a big number. Groton has failed. It is time for a change. We need to change the way we are teaching. It is time for a structured literacy reading program that is backed by science and proven to work on kids that have the hardest time learning to read. It is a fundamental right to know how to read and learning begins with reading. Let's make sure all kids have the foundation for lifelong learning.
I did print out.
That is great. If you could just leave it together and what's going to happen is that we get minutes from this and we'll make sure that every of the board members get that. Thank you.
Hey, sir.
Hello, my name is Spencer Burgendal. I live at 135 Prospect Hill Road. I have dyslexia and will be speaking from experience. Back in first and second grade, when I wasn't able to read, when I had to read aloud or even just read anything, I noticed that I couldn't read as good as my classmates and that negatively impacted my confidence in school. Now, in seventh grade and in the Wilson program at step twelve point two, and I've been working in the Wilson program for about seven years, I can say with the utmost confidence that I'm an amazing reader and I can also say most of the kids in my class do not have the reading capability that I have or the level of understanding of phonics that I have. It amazes me that most of my classmates can read small words easily, but the second they see a word they don't know, it is almost impossible for them to read it. Therefore, I have more confidence in class and I'm able to read and understand articles better. This causes me to be a better student and a better learner. Being able to read more perfectly just feels like a part of me. And I also feel that being an amazing reader has impacted my entire life as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to stand just because I feel more comfortable standing as a speaker. So for full disclosure, my name's Portia Bordelon. I'm a Groton Town Councilor, but I'm also a resident of 24 Jefferson Drive, Groton. I'm here speaking as a taxpayer resident. First, I want to say that I stand with the paras as a former paraprofessional in Groton, Catherine Folnowski, as well as Mary Morrison back in the day. It was one of my first jobs I came into after being a state home mom with a husband who was deploying all the time. That time I was paid ten dollars and something. At the time, I was extremely thankful because I thought I was with my kids. Long after that, did I determine that I wasn't as thankful as I should have been and I looked at my neighbor accounts and realized that Learn at the time was paying almost five dollars more an hour as well as Norwich and New London. And over time, I did leave. I also noticed that the paras who worked in, I was in a medically fragile room, which had children who had cubbies that were somewhat isolated, that we had to use PMT techniques and blocking where you could be bit, your hair could be pulled, spit, grabbed. And the shortage that you guys speak of, I've experienced because I was bending down to read to help tie someone's shoe and a kid came over and grabs my hair and shook my head. So the shortage is a real thing and a concern from a safety level at all levels. So I stand with you all and I think you guys deserve fair, equitable wages that you guys can support in our community and be respected. Not only that, you guys are frontline workers coming off of COVID. You're the ones intimately working with our students face-to-face daily in close proximities where you may be spit kicked, pinched, butt bitten, and I feel that that should be rewarded and paid a fair wage. I also want to state, I appreciate the emails that you guys sent back to me. You know, in light of all of the cardiac arrests that were happening across our country, from athletes to even just students that were under diagnosed with lupus, I did get a response back about the AED machines. My concern was the fact that the new wing of the high school did not have AED machines on all floors. I know you can't answer me now, but you did send numbers of what you can do. But my question is, when are we installing them? The numbers didn't say if you're going to do it or not. I noticed that the middle school had more AED machines than the high school. That was a concern. I did talk to the athletic director. He did say that you guys did reach out to him. They're purchasing more. I also want to move that Groton should make it that the gym teachers are required, not optional training, required to be CPR certified, just like our athletic coaches, because a student could become, have cardiac arrest at gym more likely, and that would be important. One of my other concerns is Narcan here at the high school. Addiction doesn't stop when the nurse leaves. I was told once the nurse leaves, there's very few staff that are Narcan trained. So my concern is if a child was to become, have symptoms of a form of cardiac arrest or Narcan episode, who is certified in our building after hours? I heard it was optional. There wasn't a lot. My concern is that there's kids hanging out here after school and there should be more options for Narcan accessibility after hours in our building. The other concern I have is the vaping. Students are afraid up here at the high school to use the bathroom. Smells, they can smell it. They're not vaping Joss cigarettes and now marijuana being as legal as alcohol and cigarettes. Marijuana is being vaped in the bathrooms to the same levels as nicotine and alcohol consumption. There are vape detectors. They aren't perfect, but there are models out there and schools are using them. I encourage this Board of Ed to seek some money of the ARQ funds and things that you guys have available to look at ways to put in some vape detectors so that all students have the right to use the bathroom and feel safe going in there. Lastly, I stand with the reading programs that were stated today. As a son who has had an IEP and a 504, my son who had a 504 is currently in the Navy and we worked independently to provide services for him so he could be on level that we had no support from the district for. And he was able to get his FT job as a fire control technician on a submarine now and is stationed up in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I had the opportunity, she had the opportunity to do that. What about the children in our district that don't have the opportunity to afford these extra curriculum programs that are failing our students? I too spoke many years back about the lack of a writing program. I noticed when my husband went back to finish his teaching degree and he was in the old line, East Line area, their reading program was this thick with grammar vocab books and writing things on top of the reading program. Thank you. So our reading and write program has struggled. The fact that I had to teach my own children how to be persuasive. Writing is a large component of the reading. I was told, well, you know, Mrs. Bordelon, there's no extra help for him, you know, for the writing portion. He's reading on grade level. That shouldn't be the concern. That should not be the problem here in this district. It should be all in cumbersome. It's important that we make those changes. And those numbers that were stated today were staggering and were the same feeling that I was feeling screaming, advocating for my own children as a mother, as a town councilor, as a taxpayer of Groton. So I stand with all of you and I think that why are we keeping a program? Because we purchased it? Let's get rid of it and get something in here that works. So again, let's support our paras. Let's pay them a fair wage so we can get competitive people in and keep the people that we have. Let's look at our reading program and let's make sure our school safety is at the forefront of our buildings, meaning the AED machines, the vape monitors, as well as making sure Narcan is accessible and available and more people are trained and licensed. I will send everything via email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment?
She would prefer to stand.
No, it's okay.
Hi, my name is Sarah Smigle. I am a paraprofessional at the high school. I live at 47 Gills Ferry Road. I learned in a psychology class a long, long time ago that if you want to be remembered, try to be last. I am very, very much in love with my job. I come to this as a parent of a child with autism who went to Fitch here and I know what can happen if they don't have a good para. I know the type of trauma that it causes to a child when they don't have a good para. So when I left my career, I said, what can I do to be a para? I was hired because they needed someone. I have provided the same level of love and caring that I gave to my own son that I do to every single child that I'm faced with. But now it's coming to a point, I have been with this district for six years. I too make fifteen seventy-eight. There is no bonus for longevity. There is no yay, you did a good job. There is no month celebrating us. We were missed by a day. They didn't even say thank you to the paraprofessionals on paraprofessional day. So you guys on the board are getting way more than we did. There is no reason to stay. And that's very, very sad because we all love the children. That's it. Like, and if you love the children as much as we love the children, then please. I have coworkers that have been here sixteen years, make the same amount of money that I had do. It doesn't make any sense. There's no longevity bonus. There's no reward for staying. And that's it. That's it. Mr. Anapos knows. Yeah, my son's a good kid. You guys have a good evening. I appreciate your time. Think about giving us a living wage, all right?
I don't want to miss.
Would you like to say it? I'll stand. Absolutely. It might be quicker. So this is.
Please state your name.
My name is Elizabeth P. Williams. I live at 221 Pequot Avenue. And I was a building substitute last year and I'm a special education tutor this year. And I wasn't really given, I was given the option of my job and I strictly took it because it was more pay over a hundred dollars that it started at and then it became a hundred and twenty-five. And at first, I didn't realize that paras were making such a low pay last year that I thought I was making the least amount of money. And I felt so stupid when I realized that every person that had.
And I felt so stupid when I realized that every person that had taught me what I was forced to learn when a special education teacher took over for administrative position and just decided that I was going to be the building substitute for that classroom with no prior experience and PTSD about issues that were not even asked about, weren't, you know, really dealt with at all. And the only reason that I did not leave was because that the paras in that room, that I knew did that every day, were there every day, and they were the ones that helped, not the people with the certifications. It was them. And that is the only reason why I stayed, is because I knew that somebody needed to do these jobs for these kids. Because now, I'm a special education teacher in a fifth grade classroom. As a building sub, I knew there were kids with learning disabilities that were just going under the radar, but I didn't realize how bad it really was. We maybe have four kids in our class of 22 that can write a paper. And by a paper, I mean a paragraph, not even a full introductory to a conclusion, because we haven't even been able to ask them to do that, because so much of the class can't even write a sentence. They don't know punctuation. They don't know capitalization. They don't, they're writing their name in the biggest font ever. And my student has autism, and he's been taught differently, yet he will get frustrated because he is confused as to why his student, the classmates around him are doing different work from him. And that shouldn't, and he has anxiety issues, and he should not have to deal with that. And the other students in the classroom should not have to deal with the other issues that occur because of all that anxiety that has put a place on my child, on my student. Because all the other children in that classroom should not have to be afraid of things that they don't understand, because yes, we talk about, you know, including these kids in these classrooms, because they should be included. My student loves to be in the class, but the class is so under taken care of, because the teacher is underappreciated. The staff is underappreciated. The students know that, and they can feel it, so they don't appreciate certain things. They don't respect the school. There's nothing up in the new elementary school that shows rules, that shows acceptance, that shows not bullying. These kids are making fun of things that they don't understand, and then they don't, they feel bad about it, but they can't even communicate it, because we don't teach these kids how to talk to each other. We tell them to sit down and do a test, and all they can think about is doing the work. And they're so stressed out, because so many kids have PTSD from living at home with their parents for a year and a half. Because I know, I struggled living with my parents for a year and a half. And I was in college, and so much anxiety and depression came out. And that is something that these kids feel. It's not something that comes on when you're 18 or 10, I mean, 18 or 15. Depression from PTSD can start as little as one years old. It can start then. They don't know how to process things. And then, you get the other onset. There's been studies from the 60s in France about neglect and the correlation between neglect and autism. Maybe we just don't understand what that whole thing is, but we're claiming to be an inclusive school, yet we're not teaching anything about it. The education is so low, because there's not even enough time for these kids to understand the curriculum and things that they are actually given. These kids are being taught math and reading, but they're being taught to take the test for the teacher. They're so stressed out about the score that they don't even know how to take the test, because they don't have confidence, because the curriculum goes so fast and it flips around, that it doesn't make sense. As a teacher, the only reason I understand what's going on is because I had a college education, which that I was having to close read. I was being forced to, for a grade. I wasn't being forced to at Fitch, but it was on the curriculum. I did AP classes. And it didn't matter, because you can play the system if you understand it enough. But these kids now are too stressed out that they don't even understand addition or a number line. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Gina McReed, and I live at 17 War Avenue. I just want to say to all my coworkers, I didn't even think I was gonna talk, but I felt like I needed to. I work with the most passionate, the most hardworking, long-time people that I've ever seen. And I come from New York, and I've worked with all kinds of people. I have never seen the driven, hardworking women or men that I see working every day. And that gives me the, the strength every day, that sometimes, to be honest with you, I want to quit. And I just don't want to do this anymore. Because I'm serious, it's not the money. It's because we love those kids. We get hurt sometimes. We've, we struggle sometimes, and we pull together as a unit. This is the first time I've seen us all pulling together, because we need to be a unit. We can be competitive. We can, we have families, us to do with a lot of hard work, passion. And yes, I'm another one who works two jobs at the same time. And I wouldn't trade this, but I do need to say, please consider the wages. And if nobody said thank you to you ladies and men, I'm saying thank you. I might not be anybody on this board, but I will tell you, you mean the world to me, and thank you for what you do every day. We are in the trenches every day, and we work really hard, and I respect every single person. And I know there's some people here that know me, and they know that I'm very compassionate and loving. You could ask any teacher, anybody here, they know. They'll always put something, Gina McReed is compassionate person. But it's because of these ladies behind me, driving me. And every day, I see the years that they've put in, and I'm like, how do you do this? How do you do this? And they give me that drive to succeed. So, please, just consider that, so that we could be competitive too. You know, we can help our families too. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
So, I'm going to end the public comments of the Board of Education meeting. To the people who are our backbones of our district, I am going to ask that our board not respond to any of the comments about the para professionals, even though we understand that you are the backbones and you mean a lot. You are the district. We get that. But we are going into contract negotiations, and I want to be able to have the board enter in good faith. And so, I'm gonna ask that we ask no further questions about that, because starting next week, we're starting up the schedule for that. So, I'm not gonna, we don't normally have a dialogue anyways, but just so that the board can enter this conversation with your union reps, I would ask that the board ask no further questions about the negotiations, so that we can do that in good faith. To our families who come to us about the reading program, our first committee of the whole meeting, which is not a regular board meeting where we have public conversation, but we are having a working meeting, where we have asked Susan Austin and her staff to come talk to us about the concerns about the reading program. And Susan and Phil, our assistant superintendent, I ask that you take a look at some of the concerns that have been said, and so that you can enrich our dialogue for that meeting. So, I ask that you do that. Thank you. Or it is the first or second, I'm not quite sure, but one of the committee of the whole, all you need to do is look on our website. I don't want to misspeak, but we are, that was the plan all along, was for us to talk about the reading program more in depth. We did have a conversation just recently, just so that we could understand the reason for the waiver, and that our next regular, maybe the whole meeting, we are gonna have a discussion about that. So, thank you very much, but we are gonna go on. You guys are more than welcome to stay for the remainder of that. Thanks.
Respond without getting into any.
Yeah.
For those of you who spoke tonight, it's, it's clear. Your passion came through to us, and we appreciate you coming out. And now, we go into the negotiations next week. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Can I have it go back to gallery successfully? Does I just?
The laptop or the?
I need, just so that I can, if Beth or Andrea have questions or whatever, it's easier for me to see others of you. I just didn't wanna, I was afraid I was gonna like leave the meeting. And that would have not worked. Thank you so much. I know that many people don't like that, but it's just, it's much easier for me to see the answers. Alright, this portion is of the student representative report, and I see two very lovely ladies sitting next to me on my left. And so, please.
Okay. Might take a minute, because I have big presentation for you all tonight.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Kate Sabatia, I'm a senior here at Fitch High School. And I just actually got back from Hawaii this morning. I had a wonderful time on this music trip. Our music department, if you're. To Honolulu, Hawaii.
I think we're okay. No one was there. It was just books. Thank you.
Our music department took a trip to Honolulu, Hawaii to perform both Pearl Harbor and in the Honolulu Heritage Festival. So, Mr. Russell has shown me how to screen share. If y'all want to see some pictures.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Does that look right? Yay. Okay. Awesome. Okay, so this is our flight in. These are the mountains of Hawaii. Let me see if I can slideshow this. There we go. Okay. So, this is our flight in. It was just absolutely beautiful. And then, this is a lot of people's first time to Hawaii, including mine. So, you know, mark off another state on my little map of things. This is our, this is our walk on the first day to Capilan Park. That's where we ate dinner and just started to get acclimated to what Hawaii was like. Seeing as there's a six-hour time difference between home and there. So, our first night was just kind of, oh, there's me, just kind of getting to get the feeling of Hawaii, you know, get our sea legs. This is the beautiful ocean behind us at dinner that night. There's our little group with some palm trees. This is on our second day. We did a secret island tour, where we got to learn a lot about just the different aspects of Hawaii, just about the different islands and about what makes this area so special. This is actually where some of Jurassic Park was filmed, so they had different toys and such, you could do, learn about things like that. But this was one where we got to go learn about the sandbar and the ocean that we were in, was this tour. We'd paddle out to the sandbar, get out, and then the tour instructor would tell us a bunch of different things, about like the fish and sea life and things that were in the water that we were in. Here's just more pictures from that day. This was probably my favorite day. We went to Pearl Harbor. It was just, it was very, very somber. I think is really the only word you can use to describe it. But as you can see, right between the two trees is USS Missouri. So, the USS Missouri is permanently anchored there. And that white building next to it is the USS Arizona Memorial, which a lot of us students got to do a tour of. This is our performance, our band orchestra and choirs all performed at Pearl Harbor. And it was a very wonderful experience. I know I had a blast, and it was just an honor getting to perform there. Oh, this is a group. We all sang the national anthem at the beginning of the ceremony. And I'm just honored that we got to be there. And then, we do have some students in our district who have parents who are active duty, and they got to do this really neat ceremony of folding the US flag, which brought tears to a lot of eyes. I will say that much. And this is the USS Missouri up close. It was really neat to see that. I've never seen a battleship in person. And after years of playing the game, it was cool to kind of see one in person.
I love that. Thank you.
This is the memorial wall. So, all of the 900 names of all the people lost on the Arizona, the day of December 7th, 1941, at Pearl Harbor. These are all of their names, and then next to all of them, it has like their ranking and what their service was. That was just like, kind of mind-boggling to see that that many people really gave their life for our nation. I was up a little bit closer, you can see all of that. This is learning about the remains of USS Arizona. They have two buries at either end, marking where the ship was. And the USS Arizona Memorial is kind of like about two-thirds down the way. And what's really neat is you can still see oil, kind of see right there on the top right corner, is oil still coming out of the ship, because they left it untouched, put it to memorial for so many men and women who gave their lives. This is inside the USS Bothen, which is a submarine that they gave a tour for, that you could go see. This is my friend Caitlin using a telescope. So, just, it was really cool getting to, you know, learn about all the history behind that, especially living in an area that is very populated, people working on submarines. It was really interesting getting to learn about that. This was probably one of the coolest things that we did. We performed our very first competition since we've gotten our new music director in this hall. We placed bronze, which I am very, very excited about. Our band and orchestra placed silver. So, it was, it was just truly an amazing experience to be in Hawaii and perform music that we all worked so hard on. And it was truly a wonderful experience. We had a lady come up after one of the judges. She gave almost like a short masterclass. And they did that for everyone in the competition, just to help further our ability with music and things like that. Yeah, this is her, right, right up there. She, you know, worked on barrels, and they worked on like harmonies and just different forms like that. It was, it was a really neat experience. This is the band and orchestra playing. And they did wonderful, might I say. I'm not in the band or orchestra, I'm the choir. But they, they sounded absolutely beautiful. And this is all of us after our performance. I think we were all pretty excited. Yeah, that's it for the most part. This is one of the mountains where I believe dress. And then, this is the Polynesian Popul Center, so we spent today learning about all the different islands surrounding Hawaii. There's Fiji, Tahiti, one that I can't pronounce, but it's a name that was given to New Zealand, Tonga, Samoa, and one more. We spent today doing different activities, learning about like the native culture of each of those islands, which I thought was pretty neat. They had different like tours you could do up and down the river, and just different things like that. We saw a lot of hula dancing, some of which we got to do as well, which is a lot of fun. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. Oh, this was us receiving our awards. So, that was Victor and Nakeen receiving the, oh, this is the band awards for silver. And one of our students, Jacob Fields, received a personal award for being so dedicated to music, which is a great honor. So, I will, I will leave it at that for the time being. Mr. Russell, I don't know how to. Thanks, everyone. Okay, great. And then, just a few quick other things I wanted to hit on. As you know, Isaiah's not here. He just asked me to share a few things with you all. He's at a baseball scrimmage today, so he couldn't make it, but he wanted me to let you know that the senior class had two successful bake sales as our fundraisers, one at the Spring Dance and one at the Irish Parade. And I also just wanted to mention, over the past few weeks, we've had the SATs and sealed by literacy tests, most of which all the students I've talked to have taken. And it feel pretty confident in the work that they did, which is great. And then, one thing I did want to mention is I've heard a lot of questions from students about graduation, the timing for that. So.
It's on our agenda.
It is. Perfect. Wonderful. That's great.
Yeah.
But I just, you know, wanted to share that as a student who is also graduating.
But you want to know what day you're gonna graduate?
I do.
You are rather demanding.
Alright, but that's it. Thank you.
So, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few things. One, I just wanted to talk about my case of the SATs. I took them this past Wednesday, and I felt pretty good about it. I can't speak privately else, but I do feel. Yeah, I have a few things. One, I just wanted to talk about my case of SATs. I took them this past Wednesday and I felt pretty good about it. I can't speak for everybody else, but I do feel like it, you know, I think it went pretty well. And I think I was a little worried about taking it like on the computer because us and the freshmen taking the SATs, that's a lot of kids using a computer at the same time. But it worked out pretty well. So I'm glad it's over, but I felt pretty good about it. For Fitch, we, the NYPD exhibition was March 8th. I went for one of my, one of my classes, one of my IB classes. We came and we helped out. And I saw some familiar faces around and I do know that it went very well. I was, you know, I walked around, I saw the presentations and, you know, I'm like, I don't know a lot of the kids and, you know, it's, I'm not like fighting or anything, but I was, you know, very proud to see that it's like the work that they did. So that was definitely really interesting. And then Stone Fitch, my class last 2024, we had a fundraiser on this past Friday. It was like a, like a dinner thing. And I was a little worried for the turnout because, you know, sometimes a lot of people, you know, come to the fundraiser, but we had a pretty good turnout. There were a lot of people that came. We got the word out and I think we did pretty well. So Thames River Elementary, they, on March 21st, it's Saturday World Down syndrome Day. They had students for their favorite socks of school and they had a, you know, thing about that. And then they've had the turtles, I think Brooklyn River. They've been going around to each class and, you know, they've been making observations, sketching on things like that. And then March 28th, they're having a whole school meeting where they are having their quilt be displayed for the first time. Which I think is really cool. So they have, you know, pieces have been designed for each class. And then Catherine Cole asked me also on March 20th, because their annual steam night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And they have a lot of partners from like the aquarium, the Seafor, electric boat, and, you know, a lot of other places like Project Go, and they're all coming to, you know, do their thing and present to the students and whoever else wants to come. And then Charles Barnum has, they're finished their second round of clusters by afternoon and they had like a little expo a few weeks ago, kind of going over that, showing everything that the students did. And they're gonna start their final round after spring break. And then they have their after school clubs are up and they're running, they're happening, you know, it's like in it. So they have some for, they did indoor soccer and I think they have a field trip to Foxborough this coming weekend to watch a professional match. So I think that'll be good for some of the kids. Because I know some of the kids in my grade when we were younger, a lot of them were like really big into, you know, soccer, baseball, things like that. And I think for those kids getting a chance to see like, you know, professionals doing it would be good. And so other things like they have like a hiking club and a yoga club and things like that.
Questions from the board? Thank you for sharing this, the pictures.
No problem. So he's willing to put it together. So. But I had a blast. I thought it was fun. I'd go back.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Don't run, walk, please. Thank you so much, guys.
See y'all. Have a good evening.
Right. This time, superintendent's report.
Yes, I'd like to have two of our staff members come join us at the table. Maybe Sam, if we can have you move down so we can have.
Sam, you can come sit next to me if you want.
So if you could come to the table. As you know, we've really discussed Fitch High School in a big way in the past few sessions and we've talked about the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program, the Careers Program. We've talked about AP and some of the wonderful training by NIMCE and some of the work we're doing there and also the ECE, which is the UConn. And actually, it was Mr. Showman who brought up, what about career pathways? So we thought we would round it out with talking about career pathways. Or say if you'd like to join us too. And just to, because you, you guys have really teamed on this and shared. I know one of the things that we, Chelsea Portwright, as you know, you've met before and she actually presented to you about the career pathways. And I thought it would be nice to, to hear more about the pathways. We're really starting next year with every freshman picking their pathway. And we're really excited about that because that will be part of what fit students get an opportunity to do. Not that they have to stick with it through all four years. They might pick a couple pathways, but at least we're really zeroing in on. We'll be actually doing some work in, we've done that before, but this is really for a discussion and kind of an update on how things are going and where we're at. And I think there were some handouts that we might, I don't know if they're ready or not.
Well, I was hoping that they would be, that they linked them to this.
Okay.
I guess Phil, Phil knows. He's on, he's on it.
Sure. And he's having a fun time, is what I hear on his press.
So the presentation is the same as what we had presented in, I think, the fall, late fall. I didn't really change anything on that because it's still kind of the same, other than what we've tried to do is organize the, the clusters so that they show up on one flyer. If we can, we get to them, I can show you what I mean. But so we narrowed down the clusters to, to four. And under the clusters are the specific pathways. So the reason we made sure that we still use the, the term cluster is that that's really what the students are used to when they access their surveys on Naviance, plus it is something the state still uses if you go to the website. But it's important that for your purposes, you know that what I've done is consolidated because I think that when we talk to a lot of students, it's a lot. When you say there's like 15 clusters at one point, then there was 12, and then we said that there were six. And so really they, they didn't disappear, but we've definitely consolidated.
It's okay.
Okay.
Jay's on it. Okay. You tell me where to go.
I just want to go to the last slide where it has like, I want to show the, I'm sorry, the flyers.
Okay.
So as I said, there's the four clusters. We have human services, health sciences.
Go over that. Because it's been a while.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yep. So the first one is the business arts and communication. So really, if a student were to say they were interested in a pathway that falls underneath this cluster, these are some of the examples or the options that, that fall under that. So information and technology, finance, marketing, digital communication, journalism and broadcasting. So if a student were to say they wanted to select or they, they find that their interests lie in the marketing pathway, what we're looking to do is say, okay, spring of freshman year, kind of help them create that four year plan. But that's, it's not just, I don't want to say just for the courses, but it's, it's their coursework, but also their experiences. So as a student at Fitch High School, what else do you need to do that really will build off of those interests and that interest area? How do you enhance the opportunities that we might have in the building, but also things outside of the building? So here, it was just something to, to, I did some research at other schools and what they did is they helped students to see, all right, what are some of the clubs and activities you could get involved in if, if, you know, that line up with your interests? So that's what I did is I showed the pathway options with some of the recommended clubs and activities. So the next cluster would be our manufacturing, architecture and engineering.
Didn't line up right away.
That's okay. So, so it's the manufacturing pathway, engineering, architecture, and then a STEM one. And then if it had lined up correctly, some of the recommended clubs are the robotics, gaming club, math team and technology club. Now these clubs and activities, just side note, I did go off of what we currently offer. It doesn't mean there couldn't be more. So it's always up for revision.
So everybody should have gotten the handout.
Yeah, we have it. Yeah, we have it right.
It really did line up well.
It did line up. I don't know why this.
Yeah, it's, it's great. It's great. Thank you so much.
So with the human services, this encompasses a little bit more. That's where the, you know, we have our culinary pathway, the government, public administration pathway, education and training pathway, and then our newly added military science pathway. And then again, the clubs and activities. And then the last cluster is our health sciences. Where right now, the, the primary areas we can offer our students are the nursing, we, we can now offer the EMT. And then to be determined is a biomedical, fingers crossed, with one of the grants. And then again, the recommended clubs activity. What I had really wanted to, to be able to show tonight were these flyers. Because what I did is, is on one side, it, it shows the cluster and then a little explanation. That's okay. And then, because I remember I showed one example of this early on, but I did all four, but they're, they're sort of a draft because I'm, I'm really going to need to look to some of my colleagues on, you know, I, I need to make sure the recommended pathway electives are accurate. But these are some that would fall under it. And again, that, that depends on what they choose, right? So they're not necessarily going to look and say, oh my God, I have to take all these classes. It's really about whatever pathway they select. So if it's, if it's, you know, in business and they say marketing, they don't need to have all of those things. It's really, what can I pull from that that would give me the four pathway classes I need to really gain that distinction at graduation? So it broke it up into grades nine and 10, and then 11 and 12. And then the last page, it's okay. This I thought was important because I, I sometimes feel our students don't really, what does it mean after high school? Yeah, okay, I go to college. Well, some, that's great. They absolutely know that's what they want to do. And then I think there's some they really don't know. And if they don't know, what does it mean if you choose something in this cluster? If you go to, you know, you get your diploma or you get a trade certification, what are my options? What are some of the options? If I go to college and I get an associate's or a four year degree, what are some of my options? And then going on to the masters and doctorate, kind of breaking it down so they can see what they can do depending on the path they choose. And then again, listing those clubs and activities as I showed you in the previous slide. And then what I'm working on is building some of our internship opportunities with local businesses. And so I'm just listing things that I'm hoping will be available to our students, what could be available. That's the biz, that was the business arts and communication, right?
Right.
And then there's one for each of the others and they are basically the same format. That's what I get for using Canva.
Yeah. We'll blame them. You can keep talking.
So the other three, the health sciences, human services and the manufacturing, architecture and engineering, they each are, are set up the exact same way. So it has on the first page, you know, the pathway elective options by grade. And then next steps. And then the other side would be again, those, those three areas, those three levels of like, you know, if I go this far, what can I do? If I go this far, what can I do? And then also listing the internship job opportunities on local businesses that either we've already started to work with or some that I'm just hoping that we do.
That was an example. I don't think we have to go through all.
No, there, I mean, if they're able to, to access it, I mean, I can, I can always.
I have it online. So it was so, I, I, and I did, and it's really kind of cool.
Okay. And I have to say, you know, some of that, these shall change a little bit because, you know, I've had some teachers that have been able to help me and work with me on some of this and I just need more feedback. You know, I really want more departments involved so they feel like, you know, they can talk about it and share it with the students. One of the art teachers had me come into their class and show this information to the students. So that was really helpful. And then they're kind of using the information to generate their own like newsletter about it. So that'll be interesting too.
And I know you've worked with the counselors closely and, you know, giving them, them the information and then families. I think, you know, the more proactive work we can do with informing our students and our families and
We're rolling it out.
website.
It out. Yeah. So we started with eighth grade and presented some of it to the students. And then the plan is to get some information out in August.
Right. And then the IBCP, International Baccalaureate Careers Program would take one of these pathways and then match it with the International Baccalaureate Schoolwork so that they could also do it in that way as well.
Right. They can take that. Yeah.
Right. I'm going to recognize.
So I think one of the essential things for this type of program is, I want you to alluded to the internships, the, the job shadow and things like that. But one of the challenges that I'm worried about is not every one of the students will have the ability to, you know, get to a particular job for a site. And so as we build partnerships, it would be great if we could bring them into the building.
Yeah.
You know, you know, not every type of career pathway will be able to do that, but you know, certain things we could actually, I could say happen coming in here. Just so that this program's available to every student who wants to do it versus those that, you know, you know, don't have the ability to, to get a ride to someplace.
You might want to talk about your good work with Electric Boat and.
Yeah. So some of what we've started, and I do want to say that like, we're still, I think in the beginning stages of this because it's, it's been, it's been interesting. But, you know, we, so Electric Boat, for example, has been great. We've been working very closely and they have already come into the building a few times. They're coming again before, I'm sorry, after April break. But they're willing to do different panel sessions for the kids, information sessions. I should also mention that I was in touch with a few people or a couple of people from Pfizer. They're also willing to come in. And they probably prefer it because sometimes it's easier for, depending on what students want to have for experiences. Same with Mystic Aquarium. And then also we had a gentleman come in who was a Fitch alum and he's willing to bring in some of his partners. He, he was like in it, he's a civil engineer. So a lot of what we've been doing is that the individuals we're involving and communicating with are willing to come here. And I feel based on those conversations, it's probably the best place to start. Because we really do want the kids to have that exposure. It's just a matter of, at this point, I guess, scheduling it so that we can get our audience together at the same time. Whether that's the students during the school day or if it's something that would be great for parents. Oh, I can tell you that the, the fire department has been saying they'll come in and do like a parent night before the EMT class is going to get going to just go over some of those things and then be brought in ambulance association. So the communication's there and the collaboration's there and it's certainly the opportunities are there. It's just, it's really making sure we can, we can fit them in. Because it seems like, you know, there's a lot always going on, but that doesn't mean it shouldn't happen. It's just figuring out when. So the, the, I just want to clarify too, when I list that, you know, internship job opportunities, it's, it's really so that it's, it's not isolated to just that. I, I know that even in talking to some of the manufacturing companies that are local, like they, they're willing to come in, you know, they know that you can't really get kids there. And sometimes even for teacher externships, it's hard because, you know, you want to provide them that opportunity because that's one of the grant items too that teachers are afforded those opportunities, but it's, it's making sure we can, if they can come here first, I think it starts that relationship and that's important. So.
Dean.
Thanks. The basic structure that I can recall is you get the secondary grades and some kids go to college, some kids instead of going to regular school, public school will go to a grade school right down, right came from grass up here. But other than those two groups, it was you graduated high school, basically sort of a general miscellaneous category, if you will. So it's nice to see some focus. Is there any cause for concern that kids electing to follow a pathway will unnecessarily restrict their education? What happens to, if they get to the junior year, they say, gosh, I think I'd like to go to whatever, I'd like to go to college and do pre whatever, I like to be an engineer. Does, does the, their background in having followed the pathways to use an archaic word, cripple them in any way? Is there any concern for that? In other words, is there just no harm in a kid in ninth grade saying, I'd like to follow this pathway and they change their mind? They don't want having to do. Yeah, it's actually a lot of something else.
I don't think there should be a cost. My hope is that the, the pathway idea or notion here is that the students with various adults throughout the course of those, these four years are having conversations that even if they were on the fence about a pathway, you know, they're still preparing themselves for, I, I don't know, I might want to go this way or I might want to go this way. So the idea here is if they're more definitive, then that's probably easy, right? Like if, if we know or they know what they want to do, but like you're saying, if they, they say, oh yeah, I, I don't think I want to go to college right away. Well, maybe it's making sure they have like a plan A and a plan B. So maybe that's a comment, but maybe that's how we, we target the conversation. I guess I'd like to think it's, it's something that we collectively catch because that's our job when we're working with the kids on, on their, their plan after high school. My hope was when this came about, it would actually catch those kids that are floundering because they really don't know and we can help give them a direction and, and really get more of those kids and say, you know what? Even if you're not sure about college, if you get a job and then you get the job somewhere and they can pay for your college, that's even better, you know? So it's really, I think it can go, I mean, go either way, but I see it as more of a positive and you're getting, you're catching more kids and preparing them more than if we don't.
In some courses, one of that would be fall under multiple paths.
Yeah.
So, you know, even if they've changed their mind, they might already have some of those credits, if you will, or courses under their belt that they can just transfer.
Because I know students either out of pathology or because it's reality will choose courses, cutting into courses that they think will make their transcript look better because they planned to go to college. Maybe they decided after the get-go, maybe they decided that later in the day, later in their secondary school career. And so that can happen even without the career pathways, a student could sort of model, if you will, and then in junior year you realize, ah, I should have taken, I should have taken. Now that they're got two years, sometimes three years under their belt, now that they're a senior, they, they saw the light, feel inspired, now they have an idea, definite idea. It used to be when college was cheaper, state schools were cheaper, you go to college and by time, I've seen people change majors to the time. So one's daddy paying for it again. Yeah, that, that was definitely my concern. It's, it's a wonderful thing, but is there a possibility that it don't necessarily restricts?
I guess I hope not. I hope not.
Matthew?
I want to first of all, thank you and the entire team that's working on this. I think the additional clarity that your later reflection has been really wonderful.
Can you make sure that you speak up?
Okay. Did you, did you hear me?
I did.
Okay. I'll try to broadcast. I will try to broadcast a little bit more. There is one area that by its absence caught my attention. And I'm not suggesting you revise to start something this fall with it, but I just throw this out for your reflection. I, I'll put it under personal services, career pathway option. Just as we're excited about the possibility of expanding our culinary program because this area is strong in tourism. Maybe even a pathway directed towards tourism itself could be useful. It could be useful in our county. It could be useful in our state. It could be useful anywhere there's a tourism focus. And I think that's just reflecting on it. The other area is I'm of a certain age, as they say, 39 plus. And I may need senior care. You may have kids who need childcare. There are group homes that need people to care for them. There are nursing homes that need people to care for them, and that's beyond nursing. I'm not sure where you would group it, where you'd group it under a new category, or you'd find some that never fit onto healthcare. But all these ancillary career paths, they're probably not for people who clearly focused on higher education. But we have a diverse community and I want to be sure we focus as a matter of equity on all of our kids. So just keep that in mind as you move forward. Entrepreneurship. Is that, you know, that, that seems to me that goes right across all the, all the business and things. Maybe there's an entrepreneurship program which is different from financial literacy. Just, just an idea, but this is not a criticism. This is a great thank you.
I, I appreciate that. I just want to add, I think that there's room for everything you just said in the, the existing clusters, and it's a matter of creating that as a simple pathway and then designing it so that the kids get what they, the students get what they need to fulfill that. So if we, you know, when, when I say culinary, it doesn't mean we're not going to have like a tourism or, in fact, one of the grants does indicate that we should be having an emphasis on hospitality and tourism. So it's not that it's non-existent. I just didn't have it on here. But, but I do want you to know that I think that there's, there's a spot for everything. It's just a matter of where that is. And then if a student kind of, you know, indicates that there's an area such as one that you just mentioned, that they want to go towards, I think that we would then look to fulfill that somehow. What do, what do we have? And if we don't have it, how do we help them get something that will, you know, lead them in that direction?
We respond with an experience with my second grade teacher. I got a gold star one day and I asked the teacher, what did I do? She said, you said this and such. I said, but that's obvious. She said, always remember what's obvious to you isn't necessarily obvious to the other person. So articulate.
Thank you. Any other questions about this from the board? Okay, Theory None. Thank you so much for coming again.
Hard copies. No of the flyers.
No.
So, um, I know that Ken is not with us tonight.
Not with us.
But we have.
You do have the attachment in front of you. Um, and the news is a little better that now the balance is at $60,000. So we're still hanging in there and we're, we're actually monitoring the budget, you know, towards the end. And we're, you know, looking to extend those things that we budgeted for very carefully and we're doing it. So as we approach the end of the year.
Does the board have any, does the board have any questions about the object summary?
And then Lori's here to answer any questions you might have. So I think that both she and Ken have explained that in the beginning of the year, this is very typical. We've seen this over time, then in the beginning of the year, until deductibles are met, that you kind of see the actual cost being less than what's budgeted. But about January, which pretty much happened, you see a shift where the budgeted amount is less than the actual amount.
That's right.
So.
Not unusual that we see.
Not that's very typical trend that we see here to you. And then interesting to see what happens then by summertime. But we have been under the actual budgeted amount with actual costs over the past couple of years in its entirety, I think.
That's correct. So. Any questions about the health insurance report? All right, Theory None. Lori, thank you. Let's move us on to Mr. Kilpatrick, who is sitting by my right hand side. Yay.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So I, a couple of things that I'll, I'll run through, but I guess the first thing is, uh, if you, if you came into the room and looked around a little bit, may have seen that my staff was here early this morning. We found out that we had a lot of pictures to hang. So the artwork was all hung this morning in, in haste, but very well done by Kevin, Billy, Scott and Toby with the able assistance of Super Dave. And of course, Lizanne here in the library was, worked with the guys with that too. And of course, I mentioned, I think at the last board meeting that the Makerspace that's behind us over here was cleared out and made functional for them to start their program. So they've already started that program, after-school program over there in the Makerspace. So hopefully you'll get a chance to mill around and take a look at that. We are planning, my, my coordinators and supervisors, Wendell Gaston and Tom Bingham are, are planning for projects for April break, which is coming up soon. Which will be the middle of the month. And of course, when we get to April 15th, then I think that we're going to be pretty safe, that we're going to say that it will be not likely to have any further snow situations after the 15th of April. I think somebody else jinxed us at the last meeting, but I'm going to knock on wood. So this is not a jinx. You, you also may have seen that somebody came in in their softball uniform here to speak to us tonight and spring sports have started. We're out there getting the irrigation systems, fields prepped, so on and so forth. Along with the, the two new elementary school fields for some of our high school teams that are going to be practicing over in those places. The solar project continues to move along. It is now at Kenton Frost is working on that now with the Green Bank and we should know very soon that we'll be ordering parts and presently we're planning on a fall project for that. I think I stated previously that we get the stuff up, if we get the equipment up on the roof, it, it won't be making a lot of noise. We should be able to do it during school time as well as after school. So that should move along pretty quickly in the fall. And of course, the Groton Middle School Field Lights were in the final stages of plans for that. And I'll be able to hopefully report at the next meeting where we stand with that with regard to placing orders for that. We are also sending out bid specs. We're working on bid specs for, and advertising for a contractor to the Northeast Academy Drainage. You may recall that I talked about drainage around a, a part of that building to help alleviate some of the moisture in the ground there. So that will be going out the middle of April. And we are also doing bid specs for architectural services for the Charles Barnum, who the, the state has changed their procedures. And in order for the architect to get reimbursed, we actually have to go out to bid now. You used to be able to select them without going out to bid, but, so that bid package will be going out shortly and before the middle of April.
That's it?
That's all for now. I might have forgot something.
You guys are just, thank you so much for your hard work in the district. Any questions for the facilities?
I just also mentioned that I'm available if anybody wanted to look at the culinary arts area when we leave here. It's around the corner. I'd be happy to open the door and we could walk through there if you'd like.
That's great. Thank you. All right. So we're moving on to, um, our committee reports. Policy Andrea, I know that you're on Zoom. I do know that we are, um, going to be acting on one of them, the second meeting. And for graduation requirements. Um, and Andrea, in your absence and also just because of the time, I am going to ask for the board to consider that we take number five off of the agenda and we table it once again so that you can be present on, in, in doing that. But I will, as we get closer to that, I will make sure that we have agreement to that. Anything else on the policy end? All right, Hearing None. Curriculum, Liz is also not here. She is sick. But I don't know if.
I mean, I can speak to, you know, we did have, hold a meeting and we discussed, and Dr. Ackerman can chime in as well. But we just looked ahead about the plan to meet with, my plan to meet with the department heads to plan out the curriculum work that is going to happen, some before the end of the school year, but also to map out the work for the summer to update our curriculum. So.
Okay.
That was a big part of our discussion.
Okay, great. Thank you. Finance and Facilities, Jay?
March 7th. We discussed Eastern Point Beach profit statement.
Uh, Eastern Point Beach, I'm sorry. Snack bar. I thought you said profit bar and I crap it moss.
We discussed student meals, summer meals. The non-lapsing fund proposal and also the field lights and so.
Any questions for finance and facilities? Have you been, I have a question. Are you, where are you in the conversation around lapsing funds? Are you just gathering information at the present moment?
Right.
Okay.
Ken reached out to Casbo to determine where how many districts are participating. Of course, for us, it's very we don't have some huge amount of money. Here, perhaps. As he holds some of the other districts' concerns were transparency. You know, right now we go through a process where every year the town bodies review on our budget. The concern is, you know, wonder why is shifting money off? Budget process. It's a concern about transparency. In some towns, apparently they were accused of having slush funds. So, you know, there's, there's things to consider. A list of pros and cons. But right now it's kind of academic for us because when was the last time we turned in large amount of money in town?
No, we have, but it's all. Any, any other questions for finance and facilities? Communications?
We did not have a meeting tonight. This isn't well and so we're going to see if we can schedule and make up meeting in the next 10 days or so. I just do note that somehow the library and the trails others dropped off of this, this time.
All right. So, um, as I mentioned, next week we start on at least meeting to set dates for negotiation with a pair of professionals, and that's going to be our next contract that we're working on. Rita is not here to report on Learn. The Town Council RTM Board of Ed liaison was scheduled to meet during our April break and that I've sent word out to get that rescheduled. And once again, that is on a, that's on a quarterly basis now. And, uh, the liaison meeting for the AGSA, GEA and Board of Ed. We just met last week. I think it was last week. And I think we really didn't talk about anything new from our last liaison meeting. That's sort of how it feels. That, uh, I guess there is, um, there was a listening tour that was done by the County Board of Education around the, the SEDS program, which is the implementing the data into a computer program. And I guess many districts like Groton are really having a hard time inputting the data, getting the data to work, getting the program to work successfully. And it's still taking a lot of the teachers' time. And I don't think that the, the person that was giving the listening tour actually had that as a as an agenda item, but I think that they stopped their presentation and they, and they heard at least that's what was happening at the, they're going to the different regional education service centers. So they started that learn and they will go on to the other ones across the state. There, we did talk about VNA. It seems that there's still some not, um, what's the word? There's not a follow-through necessarily between buildings in terms of policy, but I think that they're starting to work on that. Going back, oh, I know what I needed to ask the board. The, that caller who is the chairperson of the GEA, um, they, they suggested that maybe the, the board, the, the, the leadership from the GEA and the leadership for the administration union come together to do a strong letter to the, to the State Board of Education to kind of state our concerns about how much of our staff time, I mean, actually, Peter Bass, who was one of the principals, who actually spoke to the fact that he, like, his staff, like, the students are not getting necessarily everything that they need because the, the, the program is too clunky. And so to, to really kind of do a united front around talking about our concerns about, we understand where the goal is, we understand to streamline it, but, but it's nowhere near streamlining. Am I capturing, catching that conversation?
They did say they wanted to write a letter to the State Department about, yeah.
I think, I think that that was it, that once again, it was our major. And our last of the year is May 20. It's at Mindy. It is the Wednesday in May. I think it's the 24th or 23rd. I can't remember which that date, but then that's our last of the meetings with the AGSA, GEA until the, to the fall. Um, Groton Scholarship, I know that Liz is not here and I did not get a report from her. Athletic Fields?
I haven't met. Person record, I guess. Feedback. Plans. Potential uses for the potential property. And so time is about to start. Time is about the same. Future property and that. I saw with that a little bit like for.
The fields. Especially the uh Grotton. Um and I uh the the State Council for Military Children, it's spring meeting, but it hasn't happened yet, I'm assuming.
Not yet.
Okay, um and trails and library. And I believe Matt, if you could just um attest to both of them, that would be great.
So with regard to library, uh at their last meeting, they're planning for their twenty-three summer reading program underway. Susan, you liked it. The theme is submerge yourself in reading.
Love it.
Uh I'm not sure that I believe there's been real good communication and collaboration through the school system and the library. Just more of the same to happen this year. Uh how does? They had, uh library had its own policy on reviewing library materials. Actually, they're calling them uh library materials. As inappropriate when somebody makes a complaint. Uh that policy, we're we're gonna be looking at something similar. Uh. I guess you're gonna postpone it till to for the meeting from two policy, but their policy requires that every complainant must be a Grotton resident. Must have read, viewed, or listened to the entire material, must be specific in what one finds objectionable. How he or she thinks it will affect library patrons. The material review decision would be made by library staff. Uh there's an appeal process. The councilor board alone raised a question about Narcan training. Uh I don't know what we do or don't do in that regard, but the library has provided Narcan training in the past. And if if that's something you're interested in looking at, we can chat with Jennifer.
You can also see our good friends at GASP too about what they about what they have along with the police department. That's. Good.
Okay, uh with regard to trails. It's a follow up to what I said last month on the cop family park rail trail update. Mark Berry reported that he plans on moving ahead on a vision impaired hard surface loop trail. Wide enough to accommodate two wheelchairs side by side. Uh they're gonna use a Microsoft Soundscape application, which will not only describe. Uh terrain, flora and fauna, but there'll be a radar-like function so that somebody can see if there's. Uh something on the path that they shouldn't bump into. Uh following Mrs. Manzio's interest in engaging the marketing students in real-life design of a marketing plan. Mr. Barry visited the Fitch class to share the project concept and begin discussions about possible involvement. More news as this develops. So that's exactly what we want is it's getting engaged in real world, real world projects to benefit Grotton. Thrive fifty-five. As an outcome of that, Mr. Barry reported that the same class. Visited Thrive fifty-five, which would like their assistance in designing a new promotional brochure. I don't know the details, but we'll share them as they come. Ted's optimism is the administration for allowing it to happen.
So Matthew, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate um how much you have um in your time of being on the board to really. Um synergize a lot of the different um departments in Grotton so that we're working towards one goal. And um your energy and your drive to that is just really appreciated and admired. Thank you.
And I appreciate not driving around in the table all the time.
Yeah, ah, yeah. Never happens. Alright. I am moving. Okay, so um our one action item is um the consent agenda, which is all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine. And will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed. Can I have a motion for that, please? I I have William and I have Dean seconding that. Let's say that seconded being that. Um any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of the approval of the regular regular meeting minutes of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and three, which is attached, um please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. Our next old business on uh um. Jay, if you would be willing to read uh the motion, please.
I will approve of policy P six one four six graduation.
Can I have a second, please? I had Dr. I have um William again for a second. Any discussion?
Just a comment. I raised the comment because I want to acknowledge that uh Liz has uh expressed her desire that we give consideration to a. Fourth, uh an additional credit to increase the number of social studies credits from three to four years to put it in line with the other miniature zones. I can't speak. I don't know what she would have raised or not tonight, but from my part, I'm looking forward to her. Looking at the data and considering that if if we don't add it this year, which is fine.
Yeah, I think in the future, we are gonna collect the data though because. I do see that most of our students are doing three point five because we have the point five civics. Course, but we'll get that data and share it with her and all of you. Yeah, thank you. No, thank you. Any other discussion? Alright, hearing none. I uh my only question is, I was really so happy that we could partner. With Miranda Chapman, who is our liaison with the military, they used to give us that information about what. Keeping our graduation credits in mind, um so that when um people who are part of the military, when they transfer in and out, that they are not. Penalized if we have the wrong, either too much or too little. So I'm appreciative of her of her guidance.
We've gone up one. We had twenty-six credits, which is what the state mandates. Um we also looked at data in surrounding areas and most of the the other districts are at twenty-six. Um including Department of Defense. So um with the one extra credit for world language. It aligns our work in international baccalaureate MYP and sets our kids off for a good course. Get a sale of bi-literacy. Um so that was added, so we're up to twenty-seven. So I think. We've kind of made a mark, but I wanna, you know, it will start with the students who are freshmen coming in next year. And we want to make sure that our students have every um access to um careers and programming and um graduation.
Any further discussion?
And I try to find out that we discussed this uh previously. Quite a long.
Yeah. Thank you. Right. As 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 you're right, this is the second reading. I actually think that we've actually even had it. As a discussion before we even talked about it as a policy. So. Alright, all those in favor to approve policy P six one four six graduation requirements as a second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstain. Motion has passed. Your patience.
I know. Thank you, Yvette Morales.
Um please come and join. I would love that. Um I for while she's transitioning um to the table. I am just gonna ask the board a couple of things. Could we please move Ernie's um? She can sit here, she can sit there, she can sit. Plenty of seats. Um that we move um number, the new business, three and four, which um is about the food service program. If we can move that next. Um can I have a consensus that that would be okay? That's fine, thank you. Um and then also, uh while I'm asking for consensus, can I please um as say that number five in Andrea's absence and also. Um in terms of time so that we can have a a good discussion about it, um I'm asking that we table number five again, which is the library materials. Is, do I have a consensus for that? Do I need a motion to table it? Sure, can I, Dean, would you give me a motion for? He moved it first. And you second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried.
Sorry, Kim, I didn't get the second.
That was Dean.
And the first was?
Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. So I appreciate you coming back and I appreciate you coming back and it looks like there's lots of stuff that might have changed. And so I am wondering if you could kind of speak to that. Um but before we do, I just want to put the motion on the floor, if I can do that, so that Ms. Joan doesn't get mad at me. Because she children. So may I um Dean, would you please read the motion um for uh new business? Uh number one, please.
Certainly, uh I move to approve Bitch High School World Language Department's field trip request to Costa Rica at Panama scheduled for July first. Twenty twenty-four through July ninth.
Can I have a second to that, please? I have Matthew. Alright, and so the discussion, so I just let me set the stage. So you were here before and we just needed to have a little bit more information. And it looks like that has happened. And so thank you for 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 coming coming back. I appreciate that.
Yes, so um last time you wanted uh to know about liability, you wanted to know about um, you know, more information about the trip. Uh the trip is um all the the prices included, the transport transportation is included in the price. Um and where it says here, transportation, you know, um. Parents would drive to the airport, you know, and then meet me there. This is just here. Uh and then in the trip, there's transportation provided. There's general liability insurance with EF. Um the students will be um. You know, the the original trip was Costa Rica, Panama and Colombia. So Colombia is not there anymore. Uh so the price, of course, went down uh and it's it's more um affordable. And there is, there are different programs for the kids to, you know, be able to be part of the um trip. There, um I've never done fundraising, but you know, I'm willing to do that with the kids. And I know that um the travel teacher, the travel club teacher also has um. Fundraising that she does with the kids, I believe. So I will ask her. I mean, I have done fundraising, but I've never like started one myself. But um there is possibility for fundraising. There's possibility for um them to be able to have um. They have an app in EF that they can get money, you know, put in there through family members, you know, for birthdays or anything like that. So to goes towards the trip. Um what else? There is sample hotels here that you guys wanted to know. There's a um, you know, that I put here and then the sample meals that they may have. Um there is the link for the um. The person that is the representative, she has uh she also put uh her information here in case there is, you know, the. Because if there's any questions about the trip, um the itinerary is right here at the end of the proposal. And um the trip is from June, July first to July ninth, so it's last time before it was twelve days. Now it would be nine days. Um or is there anybody else that any questions for me about it?
So the transportation to the airport. It requires personal transportation.
Yes, uh I usually have a meeting with parents. I'm many, not just one meeting with parents, and we decide what we're gonna do. We're gonna collectively go together. If we're gonna go uh on our own and then meet me at the airport. We uh the last two trips I've taken, we have met at the airport. Parents just wanna drive their kids, say.
There's not like a charter bus that you, not like people move here and then you drive up together.
Right. Any other question?
Questions?
I'm sorry you were savage the last time. That's how I walked away from that and I thought it was. Well, thank you for coming back again.
Yeah, and I have all the information that you want, so.
Oh, I had you.
I guess I have one comment. I think this is fine. I have no problem voting for this, just as you did. I do have an idea.
Uh huh.
Duck under that desk, Kim. That we consider the possibility, maybe we can discuss it later, about arranging to have a sister school. In France, Spain, Uruguay, wherever, so that we can have an exchange program. Where the kids get to live in our families, our kids get to live in their families. They really meet the culture on a completely different basis. You do all the tourism and swimming and all that, that I really want kid to kid. Uh I can't help you with the Hispanic location, but if you're glutton for punishment, I can find you lots of exchanges and that's.
Okay, yeah.
Sweet.
My only concern is that, I mean, I'm glad that it's sixteen month period, you know, pay period, so drops the payment to two hundred and twenty-seven per month, but. Um. I would love for us to be able to sponsor some UBS students because this is a lot of mine.
We were talking about that um last time that I presented, we were talking about that and um. You know, about if the board wanted to have like a scholarship or something for kids to be able to go. And, you know, I was talking to the travel um club teacher and. You know, we were, I was thinking, well, maybe they can do an essay or, you know, and explain why they would like to go to the trip or something. For them to be able to show that they really want to have, you know, go on this trip and be able to enjoy, you know, be able to be part of it. Um and, you know, maybe we give given to one or two people, you know, that that would like to.
So. I might also recommend that we talk to your colleagues in the music department who just did that great Hawaii trip because I know. There was a lot of fundraising that went behind that and there was also some donations. Um that were provided to help support so that all students who wanted to go were able to go.
And that could involve some publicity within the community as well as within the school district.
Yeah, my my concern about starting something from the board is that that sets a precedence that. Um we may not be able to necessarily fund from our from our budget, but I think to support fundraising and to support making sure that this is. I I think what I hear you saying.
It's my ask us for her. Yeah, not not the moss.
Yeah, right.
For her to be able to support.
Yeah.
You know.
I want to make sure that these trips are available to anyone regardless of financial status. Um I think the kids to have a world experience is just so very um important and valuable in this day and age, but.
And even kids that are going to the trip that the travel club teachers having this summer. They're thinking of going to this one because they wanna work and, you know, they're already in like working age, so they're working towards that. Their parents might be giving them half the money or some, and then they put the other half. They all told me about it. There is also a two hundred dollar discounted day if the. Trip gets approved by board and then I have a meeting with parents and they sign up within a certain timeframe. They get a two hundred dollar discount for that. So that's.
Any further discussion? Good woman. All those in favor to approve the Fitch High School World Language Department field trip request to Costa Rica and Panama, scheduled for July first, twenty twenty-four. Through July ninth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried.
Thank you so much.
Welcome to Costa Rica. Alright, as as I have asked, can we please go to number three? Um the motion. So Ernie, please come join us. Um in last year, we had a lot of discussion around verbiage and wording. Um I'm just gonna caution the board is that this is the state law and we can't change words. We just have to make a decision. Um a yay or nay or actually just to be able to move this forward. So we can get caught in what it's saying all we want to, but this is state law. So we can't change. If you remember last year, we it had to kind of come back to us. So um Matthew, would you be willing to read the uh motion for number uh three, please?
I move uh that we first that pursuant to CGS section ten. Two one two fifteen F, the Grotton Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for service students in schools under experience. This and and not exempted from the Connecticut nutritional standard published by the Connecticut State Department of Education. Will comply with the Connecticut nutritional standards during the period of January twenty twenty-three to June thirty twenty twenty-four. This certification shall include all food offered for staff, students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources. Including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school and non-school organizations and groups, period.
I just felt like I was li- listening to my reading app and I went to two the speed to two point O. Oh, I am sorry. I was not laughing at this Ernie at all. Matthew, thank you so much. Can I have a second to that motion? Thank you, William. Um discussion.
So the um. This is, again, as uh Madam Chairperson just mentioned, this is right from the state of Connecticut. This is their language that had to be in there. So the second motion, um when you guys get to it, is we do want to have the exemptions there, um which is um puts in place. So it allows fundraising activities to take place. Um like the pasta dinners in the evening and uh sports games and stuff on weekends and stuff. This is a good thing. We don't want to limit our groups to not being able to fundraise on school property. Um you know, and it is after our school normal um operating hours. So this is a a good thing. Um and I and I hope you guys approve it.
Any further discussion? I can. I cannot read like Matthew, so all those in favor of the motion that is on the floor, please say aye. Oppose, abstain, that motion has carried. William, would you, you be willing to do the motion for number four, please?
Yes, not as fast. Motion that rotten board of education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed. In section ten dash two two one Q of the Connecticut general statutes provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. Two, the sale is at the location of the event. And, three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. And quote, event, unquote, is occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice meeting or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interest class debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. We quote, regular school and day, unquote, is the period from midnight before to thirty minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Can I have a second to that? Matthew. Discussion. Any more than what um Ernie has already given us, folks?
I would, I would ask that we. Take comments whenever you implement a policy like this, let's have some feedback from people, let's see how it all plays out. If there's a glitch in here that we've been unintentionally worked into student sales, then. I'd like to hear back from people, something like a, an unintentional result of, of adopting this.
Okay, do you see any glitches to that?
At the moment, no.
Okay. Jay?
Um, so we actually are required to this every year. How, how many years have we?
This is our um eleventh year.
So basically, the motion three is. That we're going, we're, we're going to adhere to standards for lunches served to students during. This whole, I, I carry services.
Correct.
This other one's simply an exemption allows food that doesn't meet that standard.
Correct.
Hot dogs, hamburgers, bake sales to occur on the property outside.
After hours.
Directly sponsored by.
Correct.
So we've been doing it for eleven years.
Been no glitches.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Motion has carried. Please, can we go back to number two? Thank, Ernie, thank you, and also thank you for this next. Bev, do you have any interest in reading the motion for number two?
Uh, I make a motion to approve June sixteenth, twenty twenty three as the graduation date for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Can I please have a second? I, second by William, any discussion on that?
What day of the week is that?
Friday, we always do Friday, it's been the sixteenth, seventeenth for years. Yeah, you're right, it has been on that. All those in favor of the, of the motion to um. I turned the page, to approve the June sixteenth as the twenty twenty three graduation date for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstain, motion has carried.
Point to clarification, if that's a terribly rainy day, do we do it indoors, do we just, we do it indoors?
Yes. Um, I'm going to uh go to number six, because remember we are tabling number five. Number six is to recognize April third, twenty twenty three, a paraprofessional appreciation day. And to direct the superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the paraprofessionals, can I have a second to that? I am sorry that our, that some of our workers felt that we had missed that date. So, you know, it's interesting, different lists will show different months for things, so that Joyce keeps really close track of the way the board has always laid it out. But there was some indication that the paraprofessional day was last month. So we just recognized them again, so we'll doubly recognize. Yes, if you could please send that to them, that we, um, that our list had it. Right, um, at a different date, I would appreciate that. Yeah, well, a lot of different dates. I, I know that Beverly had sent a really good comment to me, which is that we should probably be spreading them out during the year. But that also becomes difficult because there are lists that appreciate and certain, and certain dates. And so I'm not quite sure about how to reconcile that, um. But.
No, no, Kim, that's not what I said. I said that we shouldn't have staff appreciation day on the same day that there's teacher appreciation. Because last year, some people felt slighted, that um you had, I don't know, sandwiches and soda, whatever you had. On staff appreciation day, but they didn't know it was staff appreciation day, all they knew was teacher appreciation day. And it looked like you were doing something for the teachers and not for the other um employees. So that's why I said, don't have staff appreciation day on the same day that you have a teacher's appreciation. Have it separate.
Beverly, thank you for the clarification, I'm sorry, I misrepresented you. And I'm glad that someone spoke up about that, because that would never be. A intent for the board to not recognize people. Um, can we go around again, Jay, would you be willing to read um the motion for number seven, please?
Kim, excuse me. Yes, I didn't get this, I didn't get the second for the P, uh, powers.
I have William.
I, I think it was William.
Thank you.
Just make it with him now.
Um, a- and you know what, I didn't finish the vote, did I? Thank you, Ms. Joan, so all those in, so all those in favor. Of approving the paraprofessional day on. April third. April third with a uh, with a notation from the superintendent to say that we thought that it was the month of April. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the motion has carried, I'm sorry, well.
I would just like visibility, calendar, calendar that has, you know, the specific days, so that every year people know when to recognize.
So there is, there are multiple calendars, we have one from the board event. That's very consistent, Joyce keeps, but other calendars pop up and show other dates, even on your Outlook calendar. Like it comes up, so it makes it confusing. Jay, would you be willing to do number seven, please?
I move to recognize April twenty sixth, twenty twenty three as the straight professional day. Direct the superintendent of school to send a letter of appreciation to the.
Can I have a second, please?
All right, I'll say.
Okay, Dean, seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, and that was for the motion that was on the floor. Dean, would you please be willing to read the motion for number eight?
I would.
Thank you.
I move to recognize the April fourth, twenty twenty three as school library appreciation day and direct superintendent of schools to send a letter of appreciation to the school library.
Can I have a second to that?
Second.
I just hope we never leave anybody out. Any discussion?
Why are they all in April?
Every, everything's in April, or May, if I, if I don't hear any more discussion.
We had librarians anymore.
If, if I don't hear any more discussions, all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. That motion has carried. Um, letters, communication, comments by board members, Jay?
Uh, so I um had the pleasure of actually coming to this uh, this space, now known as the Dr. James Lee Detle Library. Uh, for the NYPD Personal Project, and this is the first year. That they were doing, uh, publicly, right? There were quite a number, one of them actually publishes his own book. I bought a copy of it, uh, from his various um music reviews. Uh, that he's been publishing online, he actually uh put it into a book. There was another young lady that documented her family's um. Camping in Iceland and going all through Iceland, so each one of them were able to choose. A, a project that they could then. Basically, choose in any way they wanted to, whatever media they wanted to. Um, and then students came in to see what uh this particular group had done. As eventually will become something that all the students would do. Um, then later in the week, I had the pleasure of coming to the professional development day and listening to the keynote by Cornelius Meyer. Works uh near the city, college schools. And Dr. Kennedy did an interesting workshop, I think that Dr. Ackman attended on chat GPT. So that I couldn't say.
Thank you. Bev, do you have any um communications comments from board?
No, Kim, thank you.
Absolutely. Dean?
No.
Andrea, I don't know if you can speak, do you have anything?
First, first of all, I'm not absent, I'm here, but I can't talk. But I did send you, I did send you a list, I don't know if you got it. Um, and uh, it included what the, what Jay went to, uh, in terms of the. Um, middle school program, and it was fabulous, and in that. I can't turn on my camera, because you can't see what I look like, but I have a book that I received from one of the students, his name is. Elias Solcom, and it's a fabulous book on his reactions and um interpretations of music. I went to um Mr. Kennedy's workshop and um. Cornelius, uh. Cornelius, Cornelius Meyer, I am truly losing my voice, I want you to know in advance, I'm making. You should do a journey at that time.
Andrea, your hard work um this afternoon, um. I am so sorry that you couldn't be with us in person, but thank you so much for the hard work that you put in to honor this media center that is now the. Dr. Jim Mitchell Media Center, thank you so much.
It was such a, a wonderful privilege for you, thank you.
Matthew?
I, my, Aline and I went to the uh, the Chamber Concert at Fitch, which. Did not resemble anything I thought it would be, it was phenomenal, the, the. Probably eight or twelve different presentations from xylophone to cello, it was a wonderful evening. Uh, I attended Read Across America at Thames River, CK, and Mystic River. Where I went in to read to a fifth grade class and they go all the fifth graders in ninety six.
I hope you read as fast as you did for us.
I read special English. Now, and finally, I attended a spaghetti dinner at Northeast Academy, it was great, what else, spaghetti, what, what could you want?
Thank you. William?
So, um, I attended the uh, uh, Northeast Academy uh Music Festival. Uh, of course, very well organized, um, of course, the performances were great by the orchestra. And by the bands, um, I went the second day. Going to high school with performance, so that was uh, um, very, very good. Um, we were able to uh, um, Andrea, I was able to secure thirty thousand dollars for the. Martin Luther King Scholarship, that will be sponsoring um, uh, students moving forward, uh, with my organization. Um, sponsoring that money, so I'm very happy about that. And then, um, the, the, another concern that was raised, though, was already raised today. Which are good friends and neighbors, we're discussing their concerns right now about the. Um, our literacy program and the adoption of what had been passed by state mandated law and what we'll be doing. So it'll be great to hear, you know, for us to get educated about the whole process. Um, such that we can make sure that those in our community feel comfortable about what we're actually doing. Uh, about literacy and education and learning, you know, having a son that uh is dyslexic. Definitely something I feel uh is also very important.
Thank you. Um, and so for me, um, just some of the emails that we have come, I've had a couple that I've just directed towards the superintendent and she has been on top of that. Um, and um, just to let uh, um. The board know that Susan and Joyce and I are meeting on Friday and we're gonna go over the year templates, so we're gonna try to address. The different dates that we need to appreciate, but also just making sure that the stuff that we need to get covered throughout the year. That it gets on in a way that, that's meaningful, and same with the referral tracking sheet, so um, for those of us who um. Uh, are a chairperson of the different subcommittees, anticipate that I might be reaching out to you to say, so talk to me a little bit about these and, and what do you need to have happen? I'm just trying to consolidate the process. So that's what our goal is, um, please, please note, um, that there is um some changes in our meeting schedule, I think that that was sent out. Um, last week as well, but that next Wednesday at five, um, excuse me, the fifth of April at six PM. Um, there is a public hearing um from the town council as they begin their process around uh the budget. And uh, the following day is that we meet with the town council to go over our portion of the budget. And on April tenth, um, is when we will be talking about the capital improvement projects with the town council. Before you close out, I have something for you. Yep.
We have any idea why these dates keep changing, I won't even be in town, I had scheduled to be in town based on the original. This is at least the second or third vision.
I think it's something had happened in, in the, the John Burke's office. Um, a mistake that had occurred, and so they had to reset. I just ask, as many of us who can be there, please be there, I do know that there's gonna be some people.
They pretend this is CIP.
It is a CIP, yep, it's right on there, um, uh, agenda item topics?
Oh. Um, I think that the, now that we're, we think we're moving ahead on the solar panels. Uh, maybe we could discuss whether that, we could have an open house at the middle school to coincide with that, turn this into a great celebration.
Good idea.
Uh. If the idea of looking at the possibility, benefits and. Non-benefits of having a sister city or sister school or trip exchanges. I mean, it's not for now, we're looking ahead at least a year to make this, probably two years before that would come to fruition. It's no rush to put it on the agenda, but sometime.
Okay, got it, and before you close, any other agenda items, Jay?
Wonder if we reached out yet to Rock Utilities to determine why we can't put solar panels on things.
No, we haven't reached out to them, but Rick has a pretty good handle on, um, Rick Norris has a pretty good handle on why we can't. If you'd like a report on that next time, I, I'll be happy to do it.
That might be useful. And just in closing, I wanna thank every board member who's here, who's on our screen and Zoom, and the ones who weren't able to make it. And we wanted you to be able to carry around a Groton Public Schools mug to show your Groton pride and a little handy dandy. Backpack that you can take to the grocery store, recycle. So get yours now and then I'll pass out to the others, but take one home. And um, thank you very much for all that you do. You, especially during our budget season, your tireless work, you know, um, I, you know. I really am so proud to work side by side with you. As be with you, thank you, Susan. Andrew, do you still have your hand up, or are you?
No, I'm, I'm, I, I wanted to say, before I move to adjourn, I'd like to say two things, I, I neglected to say that I. I went to the State Council for military children on, and uh, training, and it was about uh the compact. And I'll be happy to share that with you at another time, and also that I went to a church service head. Mister Congregational where I, Isaiah Anderson spoke, and after that, motion to adjourn.
I have a second, all those in favor, please say aye. I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, abstain. Motion has carried. Thank you, guys. Good, good work.